All right, we're recording.
Yes, it looks like it started. So, okay, we will, we will start and then we will do a roll call. Go to board supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to Alaska Open Meetings Act as found Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Alaska Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Go to board supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'm going to attempt to call us to order at 7:11 PM on October the 5th. We'll do a quick roll call and establish we probably do not have a quorum at the moment. My name is Mike Edgington, co-chairland use supervisor, and on the phone we have Brianna.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Brianna Sullivan, co-chair Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor.
Okay, so we only have two members present. So while we do not have a quorum as a work session, I understand we can go ahead and continue with the presentations. So we will not, actually, we should still, again, we're not taking action, but we should still go through the disclosure process. I am a, well, I think a supporter of all the organizations that are presenting tonight. And I'm actually sponsoring a program with Four Valleys this year. So that's my disclosure.
Thank you, Mike. I also have a disclosure for involvement in the Arts Institute. I usually teach, guests teach during the Girdwood Art Camp, and then I teach for Four Valleys Community School, and I also volunteer a lot through Four Valleys Community School.
Okay, so again, although we've disclosed, we're not taking any action. So we're, we're just going to leave that on the record. And then we'll go through the disclosure process again when, in future meetings and discussions. We don't have a quorum, so we won't do agenda revision or approval. The announcements are in the agenda document. So we will just go ahead and I think either Brianna or Margaret, if you can give us a, just an update and a reminder of the process. We're following and then we'll move into the presentations.
Sure, Brianna, do you want to do that? Or do you want me?
I think he would do a much better job, Margaret, but I could start it, but I think he would be better.
No, that's okay. We can go ahead. At our last GBOS meeting, we discussed that we had received six applications and they're up in front of you, hopefully on the screen. So we have a total of $41,475 in requests and $35,000 to spend. So we'll definitely be using our scaling factor again this year as is pretty typical. Sorry, I feel funny. I'm looking not at you. And then just to explain the process, in the application instructions, there's a bit of information on the restrictions and the criteria for making our evaluations. And so what the Board of Supervisors have now in front of them is a copy of your application and then a sheet to do their review. And then at the next GBOS meeting, which is the 17th, there'll be each of them announcing the amounts of awards that they recommend. And then they'll be scaled so that they're equally shifted among each other in order to get us to the magic number so we don't go over budget. Our funding is contingent upon the Assembly's approval of the GBSA budget. So that's not been a problem. And I think I don't think I have anything further to add to that. Brianna, do you have something you'd like to say?
I think I liked the way you covered it with organizing and all I think I may have said was thank you to all the applicants and whoever's there in person. Thank you for being there. And we will definitely review this probably again when we go through and make comments to each of the applicants. And I think everyone has five minutes to present, followed by questions from those of us on the meeting today.
Okay, thank you. So we'll now move on to presentations. I'll follow the order that's printed in the agenda. So first up, we have Challenge Alaska. Welcome and thank you.
Well, thank you for having us. Can you hear us or should we go closer to the microphone?
I, I can hear you fine from here.
Okay.
I can hear too.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you, everyone. It's great to see you again. My name is Nate Bolz and it's my privilege to serve as the executive director of Challenge Alaska. I'm joined tonight with Mariel Blue, our Development Director, Challenge Alaska. For those of you that don't know her, she lives here in Girdwood and has made this her home for the last several years. So thank you for the opportunity to be here once again. It's nice to be here in person. So, you know, although technically it's been 41 years, Challenge Alaska has been celebrating our 40th anniversary for this last year. We are thrilled to have reached this, this benchmark in our evolution. It started from humble beginnings with less than a dozen people operating out of the broom closet, out of the old swamp down there at Ski Patrol, that they back in 1980. Since then, we've grown to provide services to between 700 and 900 individuals every year and rely on the services of 250 to 350 wonderful, wonderful community volunteers. And manage a budget that's roughly $1.2 million these days. So we offer a wide range of programs for both youth and adults living with physical and developmental disabilities. Our programs range from our ski and ride school here here in Girdwood to five disabled hockey teams. We do Nordic skiing, water skiing, paracycling programs, wheelchair basketball, wheelchair soccer, wheelchair lacrosse, adaptive rock climbing, fishing, hiking, camping, archery, biathlon, and like Mariel said, even wheelchair pickleball is going on right now. So, you know, basically what I'm getting at is if you're an Alaskan living with disability and you're looking for a way to adapt any form of recreation, if you call us a challenge, we're going to try to find a way to make that happen for you to to participate in any given sport or leisure activity, just like anybody else in the community would. We've been doing it for the last 41 years. We also have dedicated programs for our veterans living with disabilities. Our veterans programs include alpine skiing and snowboarding, warrior hockey, warrior Nordic skiing and biathlon. This year, we're adding precision infrared shooting for veterans as well as road cycling and bike mountain biking. This summer, I'm proud to say that we expanded our program offerings here in Girdwood to start offering year-round programs out of the Kyle Center, better known as the Challenge Alaska shouting. We started out with an adaptive mountain biking program here in the Glacier Valley, and so far the response has been very, very positive. We've promoted Kelzy Hahn internally to be our new Girdwood Program Director. And so she's overseeing all of our Girdwood programming now, both summer and winter. And we're working towards an operating model where we're transitioning more of our seasonal staff to year-round full-time employees, hopefully in the very near future as we kind of flatline our operations both summer and winter here in Girdwood. We're currently investing a lot of capital into the, into the Kyle Center. If you walk by there right now, you'll notice that our roof is being replaced. And here in the next couple of years, we're hoping to basically do a top-to-model renovation of the facility. It's hard to believe that facility is over 30 years old now. And so we're doing everything we can to, to make sure that we're taking care of the prized possession that we have there. That, I will hand it over to Mariel.
Having started in Girdwood and being as public facing as we are, Challenge Alaska really considers Glacier Valley to be our home. Because of that, we really try to be as community-minded as possible in everything that we do. So in the last year, Challenge Alaska has provided nearly $24,000 in programming and services to our neighbors in the Glacier Valley. Some of those highlights include fee reductions for the Girdwood Fine Arts Camp amounting to about $6,400. Nine other complimentary or highly discounted facility rentals for Girdwood-based organizations and families. Some of those include the group health clinic, Forest Fair, Little Neares, Aliaska Ski Clubs, Ski Patrol, and various other memorials, weddings, graduation parties, meetings and trainings at a value of over $8,000 in all Girdwood bands. We provided scholarship to adaptive ski or snowboard lessons to eight local Girdwood residents living with disabilities. And we also trained additional 36 local Girdwood residents as adaptive skiing and snowboard instructors. Challenge Alaska really strives to provide value to local businesses by promoting them in things like our beach long spring playing fundraiser and daily activities like our rep, or we encourage our participants to visit all the local restaurants and bars in our Take Break Tuesday where we encourage everybody to get out and enjoy our beautiful recreation area. During the pandemic, Challenge Alaska has really doubled down on being a quality member of our community by significantly increasing the donated services that we provide to our Glacier Valley neighbors. Love being part of this community.
So we look forward to increasing our value-adding impact to the community at Girdwood in the coming years. We're extremely grateful for the funding from Girdwood Board of Supervisors, the municipality of Anchorage Parks and Recreation in the past. And we look forward to continuing being, you know, good stewards of the community and doing everything that we can to promote recreation in the Glacier Valley. So we just, we greatly appreciate your consideration for this much needed funding in the future. We will make good use of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, I just want to acknowledge that Guy has joined the meeting, so we allow, we now have a quorum. Thank you, Guy. And after your present, after any questions, I will ask Guy if he has any disclosures, just so we can go those on the record as well. I'm just warning him, preparing him for that. I do have one question. The, I remember last year you, you talked about the downhill mountain biking being introduced, you know, this summer. And it sounds like it was very successful. Were there, was that something that Girdwood residents also took part in, either on the instruction side or on the participant side?
On the, the instructor side, it was, it was, actually, I think it was 100% driven by Girdwood residents. From the participant's side, we, we did adaptive mountain biking with at least one Girdwood resident living with disability, as well as we had several Girdwood youth come as support riders on those excursions here in the Glacier Valley.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions in the board?
I have one in lieu of that, actually. Thank you, Mike. The, the 36 Girdwood-based instructors, would, would any of the, under, like the youth volunteers be considered an instructor?
Yes. So of the 36, I don't know the, the figure off the top of my head, but I would venture a guess to say roughly a dozen of those individuals are under the age of 18 that are helping out with us. Actually, they've become very wonderful additions to our junior instructor program at Ski School.
That's really great. That's really good number to see. I'm impressed.
Thank you very much. They, you know, nobody, kids listen to other kids better than, than any adult on their best day. So, so they become very, very proficient instructors that can relate with their, their participant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna, Guy, I'm just gonna ask you, again, we just went through disclosures at the beginning. Do you have any disclosures, just so we get them on the record?
Sure, no problem. Sorry I'm late. I was just, Barrel's not big. I was just down the road, but um I, I, so Guy Wade, Fire Department Supervisor, and probably not for tonight, I, or I don't know if Four Valleys is presenting or not. I know they have a standard set amount that we typically work with them on. So, but my wife does work at Four Valleys still and just letting you know, okay?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Guy. Thanks for, thanks for joining us. We will now move on to our second nonprofit, Girdwood Art Institute. Welcome.
Thank you, Mike. This is Marion Midavaya, one of the board directors for the art king, for the, the Art Institute. I wonder if I could share screen for a brief presentation? I don't have to, but, okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you for, for supporting us. Our biggest program is the Girdwood Fine Arts Camp, which has been in operation 36 years. In 2022 was 36 year of consecutive camp, yearly camp in the summer. And the camp runs, for those of you who are not familiar, and I think most people on the call probably know who we are. We're on two weeks of summer camp, art camp in the, in early August. And it's a camp for children between ages of five and 14. We have sessions for younger kids and older kids in the afternoon. And the goal is to bring high-quality education to youth, to the kids of Girdwood and Four Valleys in the Anbyrd, Porridge Valley. As you know, Anchorage is far away and it's, it's the quality of art education is not quite feasible in our, in, in, in Girdwood. So our goal is to enrich the lives of, of the kids, of the youth, and a little cheat here, cheat here. And we bring art instructors local from Anchorage and other places around Girdwood and Kinnip Peninsula, but we also bring instructors from out of states, out of state when possible. And the, we have demonstrated need for the camp. We usually have full enrollments. This year, we had almost a full enrollment. And we attribute that to the availability of great programs available to students, to, to, to kids in the summer, other than the art camp as well. So, but we also see increasing, increasing need for art education. As I mentioned, Anchorage is far away. So this is just some visuals for that illustrate what we do in the camp. And moving on to to the tuition and fees and how we fund the program. So we keep the tuition stable. It hasn't been raised in about 11 years. And we try to keep the tuition accessible for this program for Girdwood kids, for local kids. And we also offer sibling and needs scholarships. And GBOS grant has been supporting primarily the sibling scholarships and also teenage apprentice program, which we started, we rolled out a couple of years ago. And we do have a lot of volunteer support and involvement. We have five board directors. We all volunteer our time to plan and administer the camp. Families come and volunteer, community members as well come throughout the camp and before and after to help. We're also grateful for the support of the local businesses and organizations. We'll be very much grateful to Challenge Alaska, that's just presented, for generously supporting us and providing the space for the camp at ridiculously huge discount or at a lower rate. And we're also very excited about the proposed and expected renovations for, for the space in the coming years, as Nate just, just described. And we work with Glacier Valley Transit when we need to transport kids to the, to the playground, when we renovate and repaint the playground mural every two years. High Tower Pub and Bake Shop provide discounted lunches for the staff and instructors. And the Lions Club also supports us with providing tents for the outside activities. We collaborate with Four Valleys. Very strong, very, very productive and necessary for us collaboration. The Four Valleys is handling the registration for the camp, which is a huge deal for us. Thank you so much, Catherine and Melissa and Ashley. And we, yes, we, we work with other entities in the valley to, to build relationships and collaborations. As I mentioned, the space at Challenge Alaska, we also go to Girdwood Park for events. This year, we served 58 children in the camp as camp participants, as well as seven teenagers and young adults who worked as apprentices. And we estimate about the same numbers, same numbers for the next year. So 60 kids, seven apprentices. Also, a lot of community members and families show up for the final art show to support the students and to enjoy the, the, the art. And we repaint community mural, we, we redid the community mural at the playground this year as well. It's a little bit different than in the previous years. I'll show you a picture of that if you haven't seen it. And we also host winter kids and adult classes. We started doing that two years ago and we, we plan to continue this year. So this is what the playground mural looks like this year. We changed things up a little bit and decided to do a blackboard, chalkboard for, for, for anyone to explore their artistic abilities and creativity. And yeah. So, and chalk is available, so we'll see. It's some, an exciting project. So we are lucky to get support from, from GBOS and as well as from Mayor's Grant, Mayor's Arts Grant, Alaska State Council on the Arts, Alaska Community Foundation, Atwood Foundation, KMTA, not this year, but in years past. A lot of donations through Pickle Give from Forest Fair Committee and Rotary Club, and also individual donors. So we don't raise our tuition, we try to seek funding instead. And for the 2022 funding from GBOS, we received $5,340 for last year. This was spent, 60% of it was spent on 10 sibling scholarships, which amounted to 3100. And 40% of that grant was spent on four apprentice salaries, which was about $2,000. And the rest 240 went to operations expenses. It's a little old. Well, I'll skip this slide. So our request for funding for 2023 is $6,975. And which we plan to spend mostly on sibling scholarships and apprentice salaries and some for operational expenses. That's a, that's a little calculation that shows value for participants. Which I think is pretty high. And the last picture of movement activities that, that we added to the afternoon primary session in the past few years, children doing yoga. And yeah, getting active. And this is, this is all, and welcome questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I have one about regarding budget, as Marion mentioned. When you said that you haven't raised the fees in 11 years, do you think that you're still, well, is that something in the future you might nominally raise? Or keep as a goal of continuing them at this solid rate and then repunishing with fundraising or grants?
Yeah, I think at this point, we're not planning to raise those fees considerably. Maybe by 10% in the next year or two, yeah, but not, not, not much more than that. We would like to keep this program affordable.
Great, thank you. And then the last slide was the, the number for in the valley. Was it, was, was it a percentage or?
Hold on just a second. Oh, the value. Right, the slide that I showed, that was, oh, that's the slash, sorry, that's a division. So what we're asking from GBOS for 2023 is 6,975, and we divide it by the number of children and teens served in 2023, that would be 16, 67 kids. The value per child slash teen is $104.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. It was one of the questions in the application. That's why it's in the presentation.
Got it. Okay, I couldn't see the screen, but.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I should have verbalized, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions on the board? If not, thank you again. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you again for your support.
Appreciate all the work you're doing in the community. Okay, we'll move on to Girdwood Community Club. Welcome, Lewis.
Hi, Mike. My name is Louis Leonard. I'm the president of the Girdwood Community Club. And I thank you all for your past contributions to Glacier City Radio. This grant request is for the operation of the only non-commercial listener-supported locally operated community FM's radio station in Glacier Valley. The Girdwood Community Club has been providing services to Girdwood for over 70 years. History of the club is the history of Girdwood. It is truly the local legacy organization as the oldest institution in Glacier Valley. Glacier City Radio is one of many projects that the club has built and defined in the area. This grant-funded program falls into eligibility category two. It fills a need in the community that can't be met by the municipality as effectively or efficiently, or is not currently being met by another agency in the community. Glacier City Radio is run by volunteers from management to programming, provided recreational opportunities in our facilities, in a diverse audio, music, computer, library, research, skill building and electronic operating environment, as well as massive recreational listening by residents. FM 88.9 is an economic beacon, attracting visitors and travelers from Anchorage and along turning an arm. Building that we are using in the park was built by the club as Girdwood's first school in 1950. It was a few doors down from the Little Dipper Inn in Old Girdwood. When we began radio operations in 1997, our initial investment was about $400 for a five-disc CD changer, microphone, built-in a build-it-yourself transmitter in a stuff sack and a TV antenna that spread our minimal signal across Glacier Valley. Now our facilities are a high-quality Class A FM station. We are very fortunate to have received this community's support for the last 25 years to build such an awesome, endearing and endearing resource for our community. We provide a public safety net in times of emergencies. Radio is immediate. It is the only medium that provides fast networking, messaging, communications and interaction to thousands of people and available to everyone, most everywhere, for free. We are the main link in the chain of disaster preparedness. The station is an insurance policy we hope we don't need. But when we do, it has proven over and over to be the most reliable for connecting our community to emergency information. Cell phones, Facebook or the internet fail in comparison. We currently air COVID and social justice programs and presenters with a large number of voices and subjects, providing a better understanding of many issues, contributing to our good health and wellbeing. Our membership in the Pacifica Radio Affiliate Network provides us with programming from other worldwide stations as well. as well as allowing KEUL to provide programming to the entire network. Our presenters are ambassadors to the world through Pacifica's audio port. We are currently broadcasting forty-three weekly programs from Pacifica, providing eighty hours of diverse voices from around the planet. Why do I say diverse voices when we're talking about music? Well, music is news of the world. Music itself tells stories and the presenter tells of what's happening in their social sphere in their part of the country. Some of them also present arguments for social justice. All of this informs us of the relevancy and how we deal with issues in our own community. Many organizations in Girdwood use us to pass information about their activities. Local on-air personalities strengthen the sense of community with information on public issues, including community organizing, events, and broadcasts of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors meetings. In addition to our worldly, cutting-edge music, our air staff broadcasts hazardous driving conditions and avalanche warnings, passing information from the Girdwood Fire Department on fire danger and road hazards. We participate in the Federal Emergency Alert System that includes tsunami warnings and the Child Abduction Amber Alerts. When you add up all the little things that we do, they become big. We are available to the community twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The airways belong to the public and every one of us has an important point of view to express. At KEUL, we believe that there is strength and beauty in our diversity. In most places in the US and the world, the common citizen has no physical access to their broadcast media. Even in the United States, few areas are served by community access broadcasting, like Glacier City Radio in the Turning and Arm area. We are fortunate here to have a resource like KEUL and it is volunteers like you who help protect and develop our community, free speech, and the radio station. When you go to mark up your evaluation worksheets, remember we have an excellent track record, quite reasonable fees, adequate facilities, funding from local businesses, meet all the definitions of recreation, and have good volunteer support. Thank you for considering the Girdwood Community Club and Glacier City Radio in your Parks and Recreation Grant Program. And now we have questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mike, I do. This is Guy.
Please go ahead. Yep.
Thanks, Lewis, for that presentation. Yeah. Just, I was looking at the budget there and for the hundred and two thousand, it's guests and contributions, is that, is that, I don't know if you call it advertising money, but you had mentioned you get funding from the local businesses as well.
No, that hundred and two is, is not in there. That's, we call that underwriters or advertisers. Underwriting is what they're called in non-commercial radio. That's a separate item.
So the majority of that is advertising?
The majority of what?
Of those contributions are advertising?
No, the line item for hundred and two thousand dollars, that you mentioned, what, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
It's budget form number two. It just kind of gives a breakdown of where your funding comes from, it looks like, your goal amount, anyway.
But I, I may be able to help if that's, I think it's a combination of, there's a lot of in-kind contributions there and, and gifts and other underwriting sources. Is that correct, Lewis?
Yes. Donations, the actual, the actual term in-kind I used for a while, but there is, it isn't in-kind, it's actual donations.
It is donations of time and, and resources, yes.
So the main, the, the main budget is donations of time and, and other resources that we call upon that would otherwise cost us money to pay for. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, no, that, yeah, I understand that now. I see where that's coming from, so, okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, the, the largest part is, is, is actual donations of time and, and other resources.
I'd seen in your packet where that could easily reach two hundred and fifty thousand or, you know, if you had to pay for, you did have all these volunteers to step in, so, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we're, we're not even counting the volunteer on-air time as in that dollar value there. And you're correct, it would pretty much double if we were to pay everybody that was on the air down here.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, indeed. We will move on to our, thank you. We'll move on to our next presentation, which is Glacier Valley Transit.
Hi.
Please go ahead.
Trying to share my screen. Hold on one second. Did that work?
Not yet.
I think Margaret has to assign you that role, I believe.
Oh. Hold on. Oh, wait, I think that might be why.
The arrow up should be working for you.
Did that work?
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Oh, I'm at the very bottom. Let's go back to the top. Okay, sorry about that. So I am Dawn Johnson, the executive director for Glacier Valley Transit, which provides public transportation for the Valley of Girdwood. We were founded in two thousand and eight and prior to that, there was no public transportation in Girdwood. The resort did have a shuttle that basically was for spheres. Sorry, there's a cat. And it took people from hotel parking lots to the hotel and the day lodge and back. And in the summer, it ran in the evening a little bit to get hotel guests to dinner. We are overseen by a board of directors that is made up of, oh, Girdwood residents and community members. And we operate, we operate through a, sorry, there's a cat who's distracting me right now. We operate under a management agreement with Alieska. Alieska does not have any, any involvement in our day-to-day operations, but we do lease employees from the resort and they provide us with HR support and some general accounting support. So we are fare-free, so there, it's free for anyone to ride the bus. We collect donations onboard. And community, the entire community of Girdwood benefits from having public transportation. It enhances the mobility of the community, provides savings to all Girdwood families, facilitates recreation opportunities for guests and locals, reduces traffic and congestion in parking lots, and provides an alternative method of transport that continues, contributes to a more sustainable and green way of living. The majority of our funding comes from fifty-three eleven FTA Rural Transportation Grants. We do have to come up with about a hundred thousand dollars in matching funds for that grant every year. And we get that money from our service contract with Alieska, sponsorships from local businesses, municipal grants, and local onboard donations and donations from community members. We went fare-free in twenty sixteen and that, that has really contributed to more local ridership. I'd say now we're about fifty-fifty local riders versus hotel guests or visitors, where that, that used to be a little bit more of a sixty-forty split. And our fare-free service is kind of what allowed us to become a little bit more financially stable. Prior to being fare-free, our grant billings, we had to deduct fares from what we were reimbursed. So we were leaving a good amount of money on the table. And now we're able to utilize all of the funds we're awarded each, each year. So our main goals are obviously to provide safe and reliable public transportation and to establish community, stable community funding through sponsorships and donations from the community and to remain sustainable and self-sufficient. And just some insight to our ridership over the past few years with COVID. We did run nonstop through all of the COVID shutdowns on a pretty reduced schedule. In twenty, in our fiscal year twenty nineteen, we were about, we had about ninety-five thousand riders. And in twenty twenty, it went, our ridership was twenty-six thousand, which was greatly reduced. We are seeing that kind of come up a little bit in twenty twenty-one. We had forty-five thousand riders in the first two months of our twenty twenty-two fiscal year, which was July and August, we're already at sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five riders, which is pretty promising for us that we'll get, we're getting back to maybe not quite twenty nineteen, but getting there, getting better. And we're really happy to see Forest Fair and Blueberry Festivals be back because those are pretty successful weekends for us. And once again, on Thanksgiving morning, we will be hosting the, our tenth annual Turkey Trot and we hope to see everyone there. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well done on the cat wrangling as well.
Yeah, can you hear that monster?
I could, I could hear a lot of that.
I'm trying not to yell at it too. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. Any questions from the board? I have one quick question. In the ridership numbers, is that, is that heavily weighted towards summer ridership? Or is it relatively steady throughout the year?
I think summer ridership is generally the highest, especially July, like in Forest, Forest Fair weekend.
Yeah.
We carry close to ten thousand riders over those three days. So, and then blueberries, this year, blueberry was pretty rainy and since it was the first year of having blueberry back, I don't think it was as busy as it has been, but that's another busy weekend. But even like Spring Carnival is pretty busy for us.
Yep.
New Year's Eve is another busy one, but I think it's mostly summer ridership.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Just for the record, I did get a response from Jennifer and she said she was unable to connect unfortunately from where she's located. So she would have, she will have an excused absence and she'll catch up from the recording. We will now move on to Little Bear's Playhouse.
Hi, it's Camille here. I am looking for a way to share my screen.
Okay, well, Margaret will manage that for you and you should get her.
I think maybe.
Present in a minute.
It could be that Dawn needs to let it go.
Oh, yes.
You don't tell a preschool teacher to let it go. Watch out.
I don't think I'm sharing anymore, am I? And then, so when she's not, then Camille, you should be able to click up that box with the little up arrow. For me, it's in the upper right-hand corner next to delete button.
Ooh, I think I got it. Can you see it?
Not yet.
Now, come on.
It should show up in like red highlight around the outside of the screen when it starts to share.
Oh, okay.
There we go. I'm seeing it now. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. All right, this is the presentation for Little Bear's Playhouse, asking for our nonprofit recreational grant. A little bit about Little Bears. Little Bear's Playhouse vision is for all families and children to have access to high-quality childcare in Girdwood. I don't think that belongs just to us, we're just the ones that are pretty vocal about it. Our mission is to provide a safe, caring environment that promotes that emotional, social, cognitive, and physical development of children while strengthening and encouraging positive relationships among childcare professionals, families, and our community. Our goal is for the family.
I think we may have lost your audio. At least I have.
Yes, us too.
Families in the Girdwood Valley and surrounding communities to have access to.
We're actually, we're missing, we're losing your audio.
That's, I can hear you.
Yeah, it's, it's a little broken up and then it's disappearing from time to time, so.
Oh, it's strange. Okay. Let me check.
I'll decrease the bandwidth by turning my camera.
Checking the router. That's good. Should I keep going or should I wait?
If, actually, I'm wondering if, if Four Valleys, if you're ready. Catherine, would you be able to go first and then we'll just swap the order? And you can fix your router in. Is that okay?
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. So let's swap the order and let Four Valleys go now. So we'll have to, I think you'll have to drop the, yeah, I think you may have to drop the presentation, the presenter role. Excellent.
All right, can you guys hear me?
I can.
This is Catherine. All right. Hi, everybody, and hello to Jean Hansen. Our board president is in the room with you all tonight, waving. My name is Catherine McDermott and I am the Director of the Four Valleys Community School. And we are a nonprofit based in Girdwood, specifically serving the greater Girdwood community, which of course includes Portage, Rude, and Indian. This is our forty-second year in providing community education here in the valley. Our mission is to provide community education for all ages and we focus on recreational offerings as well as educational enrichment. For the last year, so from October to October, we've been able to provide a thousand hours of classes and programs with about thirteen hundred different enrollments into those programs and classes. We've administered a hundred and thirty classes and these numbers are actually pretty flat from the same period last year. And in our last year of normal operations, pre-COVID twenty nineteen, we were averaging about seventeen hundred enrollments into an average of about a hundred and eighty classes a year. So we are still chugging along back to pre-COVID numbers. You know, I did, I talked with the staff at the Performing Arts Center in Anchorage a few weeks ago and they said that they too are also experiencing lower levels of attendance at all of their events. I'm hoping that this next winter and spring, we will, will lead to greater adult enrollments as people increase their confidence to join in group activities again. But for now, we're experiencing what I refer to as a COVID hangover. Our offerings are there, we have staff, we're open and we're available. We just need to increase participation into those classes. We've also really noticed that, you know, people who have kids in the school and are used to having, you know, being in larger groups are not as afraid of coming to our classes. So our kids' classes are doing really, really well. We pretty much are maxed out in those all the time. But the continued reluctance of adults to attend group events due to COVID concerns definitely has still been affecting our numbers, very understandable. And we're going to continue to offer all of our evening opportunities, such as basketball and pickleball and volleyball, as well as keep the gym open and that indoor walking track open each evening, Monday through Friday, until eight PM, until people start to come back. I do believe that families, you know, with. I do believe that families, you know, with school-aged kids, they're just more comfortable sending their kids to our classes. So while adults have kind of adapted to working from home and are a lot more COVID wary. So we're still seeing recovery to the 2019 revenue enrollments. But I am happy to report that Four Valleys is going strong and the GBOS funds have been vital to keep our doors open and to allow the Four Valleys Community School to be able to offer a wide array of programs to Girdwood residents at costs that are very reachable and obtainable to all levels of income, so that every single person in our valley has access to recreational opportunities and enrichment opportunities. That said, Four Valleys did offer many adult arts and crafts classes this year, utilizing local businesses like the Spoonline Bistro. We were able to offer arts classes there that were very small and we were able to do it after hours. People felt really comfortable attending those classes and we do have a couple of classes coming up in October, November there. The GBOS grant continues to subsidize our program prices. And in 2022, we have been able to offer a huge variety of classes for Girdwood that utilize our local community assets, including outdoor youth soccer this summer. We had 80 local kids participating at the Arbor Soccer Field. We're gearing up to run an indoor soccer program that starts this week with 35 kids. And that utilizes the Girdwood School Gym. For the second time, we worked the Girdwood Nordic Ski Club to expand our Nordic offerings in the winter, offering adult skate and classic lessons to about 20 local adults this past season. Our Four Valleys Community School Nordic Ski Club for kids has about 50 members, ages five to 12 participating. We utilize Moose Meadows, the Nordic 5K, and the Upper Valley Trails for that program. Our adult workout classes are all now in person. We transitioned from zooming to all in person for those. And we have reached about 50 adults this past year. We are able to use the Girdwood Community Room as well as outdoor areas at the Girdwood School and the School Gym. We also offered yoga classes, reaching about 20 adults this past summer. This fall, we were able to hold the Four Valleys Community School Cross Country Running Program for grades K through six. There are about 70 local kids enrolled in that program. And we base it from the Girdwood K-38 School and run on the trail systems that encompass the school, including the Tiny Creek Trail, Iditarod Trail, the Water Road, and the Beaver Pond. This program has 20 volunteers running the trails as well. So that when you combine our kids plus our volunteers, plus the 20 kids who are in the ASD Girdwood Middle School Program, 110 plus people in our community outdoors and active after-school this fall. Other recreational classes we have offered include Kung Fu, Tai Chi, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, family and friend open gym times this fall, as well as evening gym offerings and the open track. Back this year is Glacier Valley Quilters, who meet at the Meadows Community Center at Our Lady of the Snows. We also assist the Girdwood Fine Arts Camp with their registration and administration each summer with 52 kids enrolled in that program this year, and that spans two weeks at the end of August. Our summer programs for youth included eight different adventure camps, reaching 150 kids, with themes that included field sports, grossology, Earth's easel, under the arm, and nature's market. We rented vans and were able to take kids outside of the Girdwood Valley this year, venturing to Portage and Whittier and Hope and Seward. One camp even backpacked up Portage Pass and camped on Portage Lake on the very first day it started raining this summer. Despite the precipitation, they had, precipitation, they had a fabulous time. We partner with the Kenai Mountains Turner in Arm National Heritage Area and they offer us a grant to help us subsidize those programs as well. Our summer programs operate June through August and heavily rely on the use of existing community areas like the Forest Fair Park, the Arbald Soccer Field, and the baseball field, the pavilions. And that further highlights the importance of these really incredible Girdwood parks and rec assets and how important it is to maintain those. And they are really, really amazing for our community to be able to use. Another important community asset that we utilize daily are that of our volunteers. While some of the programs I've reviewed today have paid instructors, like for adventure camps and for Kung Fu, almost all of our recreational offerings use volunteers. This past year, we've had over 100 volunteers committed to helping lead and engage our community, especially in our recreational offerings for the youngest community. In September this past year, we put this fair to conduct the registration for, and events for their forays and their other classes. We had over 200 individuals registering into 12 different classes there. We provided also a staff member for them to help with the weekend for onsite registration and overall class management. And then this fall, Four Valleys is back operating out of the Girdwood K-38 School. We don't have any more COVID protocols per se. And we currently have about 20 classes open for registration if you go to our website. We are also partnering with the Girdwood School PTA to bring a circus arts program that will reach every single student of the school this fall through their PE program. And we will also be hosting a free family fun event in a few weeks. The affordability of our programs has been and will remain a huge issue going forward. The GBOS grant has been especially helpful in sustaining Four Valleys to subsidize our class prices and allow us to offer our classes at rates that are affordable for local families. And also so that we can continue to to offer some of our classes at small class sizes with the concern for the health of our community. As winter darkness closes in on the Girdwood Valley, the role of Four Valleys is really important to the social, mental, and the physical health of this community. As I mentioned, this is our 42nd year of providing community education and recreation for Girdwood residents. We are proud to be a legacy nonprofit with the community of Girdwood being the very DNA that creates and sustains us. We plan on remaining a viable entity and providing service to Girdwood for now and forever. And we will continue to show up for Girdwood the best we can as we continue to rebound. The GBOS grant allows us to do that. I thank you all very much for the support of our programs. I also want to thank all the other nonprofits who are applying. We have worked with everybody on some level, either currently or in the past. And I look forward to working with anybody and everybody in the future. Two very quick announcements that we are hoping to tentatively have our sports swap this fall on November 5th at the Day Lodge. That's tentative until we get final approval by the end of the week. And next Thursday at 6:30 at, at the, oh my gosh, I'm blanking out on the name. Jean, can you help me? Where are we having our annual meeting?
The High Tower Pub.
High Tower Pub. I wanted to call it the Silver Tip. Thank you. The High Tower Pub. Thank you. And that's all. May I please answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Isn't a question just a comment? I just want to thank Four Valleys again. It's, it's always, it's always a pleasure to work with. You know, I've sort of volunteered on a few things in the past as well. And it's always a pleasure to work with you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We will go back to, thank you. We'll go back to Little Bears.
Yeah, round two.
Hopefully the gremlins, the gremlins have escaped.
All right, let's see if I can get this going. All right, can we see it?
I can see it. The audio is very clear. Thank you.
Very, oh, good. Thank goodness. Okay. So I'm not sure what was and wasn't heard, but I won't take too much of everyone's time because I know we're nearing the end here. But just a little bit about Little Bears. Our goal for this valley is to be able to have all children and families have access to high-quality childcare in Girdwood. We want to give all of these little ones a safe place to learn and grow. And we also really want it to be affordable for the people who live in Girdwood. That's one of our primary goals as well. What we've been up to lately, we are updating our curriculum standards. If you're not in the business of early childcare development, it is always changing because we're always learning new things about kids. So we've been working on that a lot lately. We recently secured $1.6 million from ARPA in order to help fund our new facility. And we currently have 50% of our staff CDA certified or in the process. So that's a really big goal for us that we've been working on in order to improve the care that we give the valley. Just a little bit more about us in terms of how long we've been around and and what we do on a day-to-day basis. Little Bears has been serving Girdwood since 1983, Girdwood and the Four Valleys Community. We currently provide care to 25 children daily and around 40 families annually. Of course, that fluctuates. I can confirm though, in the last five years, it has not gone down. It has always been up. We currently have six part-time and full-time caregivers. We are federally recognized as a nonprofit early childcare learning facility. And we still continue to provide working families the comfort of knowing they have access to safe, quality childcare in their community during the always-changing status of COVID-19. I know that we're kind of, you know, kind of in that point where we're like, are we at the end of the tunnel here? But for us, it's something that we always have to update and keep in mind because of how it affects these children and all of their family members. Of course, for most of its life, Little Bears has only relied on community fundraising and small local grants to support new equipment needs. And since 2018, we've only been able to host one fundraiser, which was a good fundraiser, but that's all we've been able to manage. With donations from the community, Little Bears has been able to provide program needs while keeping our rates affordable. That's been really important to us and it also is really important to pay staff a living wage. I think that that has been something that we've been really, really set and determined to do, to try and make that balance. We have been able to contribute to the new building fund as well as maintaining our current facility as best that we can. I don't know if anybody's noticed our really cool new stripes on the roof, but that is so that we don't leak every time it rains. Not on this slide, but also we have been able to give reimbursements to families through donations and funds that we've been able to achieve when we do have to close for COVID or a child test positive or a teacher test positive and it's all, you know, all outside of our control. And we've been able to absorb all maintenance costs through that as well, which has added to our operational costs since 2011. If you don't know why we need a new facility, let me tell you, we are driven by limited space. We've had a waitlist since 2011. That fluctuates as well, but currently it is 22 kids, a lot of them infants. As Girdwood and the surrounding communities have grown, there's been a greater demand for additional programs and services, specifically for infants, but then also after-school programs for school-aged kids. If anybody is on the Girdwood Facebook page or on the Girdwood Mama's page, it's, I feel like it's every other post is like, who's got childcare for my kids in the afternoon? And we have, we could provide for that if we had the space. To keep the quality of our services at the highest level, Little Bears is asking for $10,000 in order to improve our facility in many ways. This would be accomplished through ongoing training and certification. As I mentioned before, getting the CDA certification is really important step in this as a career. And we use those funds toward helping our employees gain that, providing resources for our garden, the ability to expand our classrooms through field trips and community enrichment, and then of course, updating and replenishing our supplies in each classroom. New facility update, I mentioned it earlier, but if you haven't been made aware of yet, we did recently receive $1.6 million through ARPA. This is a very, very exciting thing and we're very, very grateful. But it has made our focus for new building only sharper. A huge portion of our financial efforts will now be channeled into matching those funds in order to access them and then begin our highly anticipated project. So with this grant, we would be able to meet that goal sooner rather than later. In closing, our donations, the donations would be used to immediately fund new equipment and supplies for classrooms, employee training, and all remaining funds will be put towards the new facility and matching that incredible grant we received. We are a nonprofit striving to provide the children and families of Girdwood access to high-quality childcare. As our community grows, the demand grows and we just want to be able to serve people as best as we can in all the many ways that that keeps changing. And we could not make Little Bears the awesome learning center it is today without you and all of your help. And just look at all those little Halloween babies. Thank you guys so much. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Getting present to any questions from the board? I'm not seeing any questions. So yeah, again, good luck with the, obviously the facility is very overdue. Good luck with that. It's kind of a intimidating goal, but.
Yes, it is.
I look forward to the success.
Yeah, we're this close. It's kind of like, oh my, it's happening.
Okay, if there are any other, any questions, then I'd like to again, thank Little Bears and thank all of our presenters. Thank you very much. This is the, this is my funnest meeting of the year typically. And I think we have to go to public comment if anyone wants to make a public comment. I'm not seeing any public comments. So we will be discussing, we'll be discussing the awards themselves at our, at our next meeting on the 17th. And we should be, should be voting, voting for those and coming up with the actual allocations at that point. Oh, sorry, Guy, I didn't see your hand up there. He's go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Guy.
Let me take it off mute there. I just want to tell everybody, thanks for taking the time to put those presentations together. Yeah, this is pretty cool stuff. So I appreciate the effort they put into this because they put a lot of effort into the other stuff that they love, so.
Yep. Okay. So thank you, everybody. I want to entertain the motion to adjourn.
Still moved. This is Brianna.
Thanks, Brianna. And I'm sure Guy's hand up is to second that. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
For making Girdwood wonderful. Thanks for your presentation. Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night, all.
Bye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.